To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First item of business is approval of the Alderman's minutes of the February eighteen study session.
Who's approved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion secured. Second.
Before we move on, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I'd like to add the discussion of a splash park, Heiser-Burns Park, number four topic on the agenda.
And then, Muggins?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. This'll be item number four. Okay. Any public comments?
I've got the stopwatch ready. All right. Thank you. All business being done, first item of discussion, consideration of possible action regarding a special permit for fireworks stands. Joe, you want to...
Well, ahead of the others, Joe, this is the last that would do last, fifty old town hall, thirty-two seconds.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
They need some original light.
Light here.
Yep. So they hear you guys, we need some...
Which one, I'm sorry, which firework plan on this again?
We're at the Buckner Town Hall.
Oh, okay, town hall, yeah.
Thirty-two South Sibley Street there.
Okay.
The old church.
Yeah, I know you got that.
The number was packed the whole time.
Yes. We had, we had a great time last year, had a great year. So, we had a great showing in the community. We ran a friends and family night where we literally brought in customers from every place was, you know, it was an awesome event. We actually had Casey Brothers, they shut down their event, or their tents, and their wood league, and the community that joined us. So, we were able to develop relationships with those folks, all the other stands that were here. So, it was a, it was a great year. So, we really appreciate that, and we look forward to twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Was there any negative, negative things as far as the traffic or anything, as far as crossing or anything that I'm not very good at?
I agree with you over there, PD.
I have a long point if I can't...
I was not moving the...
Well, I... There was. Can I, can I address that?
Sure.
Because I think there was one negative thing. Just to clear it up, I think it, I think it got cleared up. Can I ask my wife? Go ahead, Chair.
Well, the only problem that I had when I was going down BB Highway, there was big signs out there, and there was people that was in the crosswalk area getting ready to walk across, and you could not see them because of the sign. There was a lady there that had a child in a, in a stroller, and I could not see them getting ready to cross because of the sign.
Okay. So, to address that, if I can, we actually are gonna change our signage this year. We're going to use the marquee sign that they have for Buckner Town Hall. We're going to create banners in the slot there, and that way we don't have those vain those signs on, and I, I heard around about a message about that, so that's something to be thought about, to make sure this year that we were going to address that.
Yeah, I, I thought it was something that had to do with safety, is what I wanted to bring about.
No, 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 thank you for agreeing on that. Because we had to take young ones into the ground, and maybe, so, you know, I think those are one of the ones that are hurting them.
You guys have vandalized your signs last year too, didn't you?
Uh, yeah.
You lost some signs last year?
Yeah, we, we lost a bunch of signs.
Yeah.
Yeah. It might have been a competition.
Thanks.
It used to be.
So, again, I'll make the motion to approve this.
I'll second it again.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, discussion, consideration of possible action regarding amendment and planning of zoning committee.
Yeah, I'll start it off with, what I'm looking to do is, as you know, we got an end of this committee, wanted to redevelop the Hinojai Springs. And, so I was going through our codes, and our codes are very, very vague, the proper process and steps it takes to get something rezoned, or to develop. So, I contacted Alex and asked him to kind of look at it, see what his thoughts were. During my research, I looked at City of Great Valley and looked at the city of Oak Grove. And on the website, they clearly got a developer's packet, where someone's coming to develop into the land, it steps out everything by step by the ordinance, and gives the application, and they go on, at one time, download it, and be fit. So, that's what I was wanting to do, is I wanted to get our turn to update our codes, zoning codes, make it with more step-by-step procedures, and less vague, give it a little bit more titles. And our goal is to do a development package, just like the other town did on the website. I mean, all of the time you have fee things about schedule fees. So, when you might not pick what you could put in, you know, so, how, Alex, what do you think?
Yeah, sure. Just to talk about those fees, most cities have a fee that will pay for city staff time, or a city has to outsource it, to have someone review the plat, and our city doesn't allow that, or our city code doesn't have that. Steve and I looked through this all, and it looks like the last time we updated our zoning code was nineteen ninety-eight. And when we're looking at Great Valley, Blue Springs, and we summit, it's pretty clear Buckner is pretty inadequate, and if there were ever a future development, even bigger than one before us now, it'd be an even bigger headache. So, what we're thinking about, Steve and I, is a pretty comprehensive redo of the zoning to lay everything out, and so that citizens can look at the ordinances, and city staff knows exactly what the next step is.
Would there be on those fees, is there something where it looks as also like the total project cost, and has a kind of a scale along with that, the...
Yeah, that's right. You know, the more expensive the project, the more time it would take for city staff, or the city were to hire an engineer to look at it. So, it's a fee schedule that would increase based on the price of the project.
Thank you. Does that mean, does there would be a motion to proceed with the discussion?
Do we have at least a rough idea of what the attorney fees would be and all that? I get this updated?
So, yeah, I thought about that today. It is gonna be more than a normal ordinance would cost, just because this is gonna be probably ten pages. I would think four to five hours of my time, not necessarily Steve's, but my time, so, that would be my understanding. I believe I'm, you know, four or five hours.
And we don't know what hour the rate is?
Sure, yeah. I believe, I was gonna say that, but I'm not totally sure. I believe the firm bills me at one eighty or one ninety an hour.
Okay.
If the fee was expensive, I guess, how much was it?
Right, exactly.
And then, as far as the zoning committee goes, currently, you know, our ordinance says we have to have two people, seven citizens, and then a mayor, and a alderman. Right now, we got two people on planning on zoning. So, we really need those numbers back out, to, at least, to decide who's gonna plan the zoning, because this is the projects coming down that we need to start talking about, maybe we can update the codes and stuff like that, so.
So, if any of you know anybody that would be interested, or able to help, we'd appreciate it, bring, bring their names forward, so we can try and get them in.
Can we put that on, to the way of time, to be able to hear? Yeah. So...
Okay. So, we take a motion to approve the...
Yep.
Okay. So, we got it all on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Update on water and sewer recommendations by Bartlet and White.
Just to give you a brief update, I met with Buckner's last month, and we sat down and kind of talked about what our ideal project was for the while, and wastewater side, and look about, give us a cost estimate of what we want to do. He came back, and the sewer side was like one hundred sixty thousand to do what needs to be done, and then the water side was like eighty thousand. So, I contacted him this week and said, hey, let's sit down, and let's look at it again, and let's stop prioritizing it, and maybe this year, since, you know, the taxes haven't really started taking effect yet, maybe this year we'll do some smaller projects, but then, in the next three, four, five years, we start to do some bigger projects, that money does more harm. So, I got meeting with him on Thursday to sit down, and I said, the next time we come back, we have a precise plan of now, and then over the next five years, of both water and sewer. And then during the conversation, he also told me that his company, Buckner's, is really good at looking at grants. In fact, they got a two thousand dollar grant for the city of Lexington to do road projects. So, I told him, I said, I'll put the plan in, get him those grants for us, because he's also gonna be looking at getting grants for road projects also.
That's worth it.
That's really good news.
Yeah, the good news is, I mean, if we wouldn't want to drain the funds, but we're getting close enough to having enough to do either one of those, so, it is perfect.
Yeah.
All right. Next up, Splash Park?
Yeah, so, I'm basically, if it's okay with the board, I'm gonna turn this over to Tony and Raquel Miles, they'll be able to kind of inform you guys on all the logistics you're gonna want here. Basically, the idea is to put a splash park at Heiser-Burns Park. You guys are seeing the train down here on twenty-four. I can look into more detail on all the little aspects of it, but I'm bringing it in front, so, I can have Tony or Raquel, they can talk to you more about it.
All right. I know we talked about it a little bit here a couple months ago, so we were able to get the train, get it brought down here. Now, we've, we've actually expanded our horizons just a little bit. We were originally looking at just setting the train and a small pad to put it on, and now, after some of the funding and some of the funds that have been raised from other organizations, and we're not done with the fundraising yet, we've got about eighty thousand dollars there that we can put into the spray park. By doing that, we're gonna be able to add between six and eight new items to the train going around it. And the pad's gonna be about sixty feet wide by eighty foot long, so it'll be a nice, nice sized pad that trains forty-five feet just by itself. We talked before about the water consumption. We were, we're thinking the water consumption's gonna be somewhere around that eight hundred dollars a month, city cost, I think is what we talked about the last time. And we have added a couple features, but by doing that, we can monitor the water. We don't have to wait till the end of the month, because we have the ability to look at it daily or weekly. So, we can look at that water, if we see the water's going over, we can cut things back on the spray park, to where we're not letting as much water go out. So, if it, if it looks like we can go on and have more features going at one time, we'll do that, but with a little help from, from city staff, we can monitor it and be sure that we're not gonna go crazy over budget on our water consumption. And we have elected to go with all fresh water. Right now, the plan is to run the water down over the hill and get it to the creek. It's clean water coming off of the spray park, basically, and in the future, we would like to be able to catch that water and possibly irrigate the ball fields, do something like that with it. So, we're, we're getting the bonus out of it also. The better grass we keep on the ball field, the less weeds come in, it's, it's better people never, but everything that way. The twentieth of the month, the park board is gonna meet up at the park, we're gonna talk about placement. We've got three places in mind, basically. One is to the west of the pool house, one is straight south of the pool house, and the third would be over where Field Three used to be. So, love to have any input and, and have some, be able to get together, talk about that. I've already got bids together for some concrete, I've got another guy coming out tomorrow to put some bids, to give us another bid. This is something that we're really wanting to move forward with, I think the park board, they're a hundred percent on board, of course, and we basically came here to be sure that the Alderman don't see a reason that that would not be a good idea for our community, and get your, your input on it.
Is that meeting open to anybody?
Yes, the twentieth, we want to have anybody we can, it's gonna be in the park, we're gonna be on site. We're actually replacing some damaged playground equipment, they got new pieces to go in where some of the coating has come off and rusted in the past, so we're gonna be fixing the last of the, the damaged playground equipment.
What time does it mean?
We were gonna make that two o'clock. We're gonna start working up there at nine o'clock that Saturday, and hopefully, we'll be done by then. We must think in two o'clock, everybody can get together, and we can talk about it, and look at the big picture plan of it.
That's awesome.
I'm sure we can find you, but the shelter house, or...
Yep, upper shelter house. Yep.
I'll tell you, I'll, obviously, I'll have a little bit of concern, because we're looking at ten thousand dollars a year just in water, so I wonder if the city's gonna take on?
Well, it would be less than that, because the, it's only gonna run, you know, six months out of the year, so we're gonna, yeah, it's gonna be a four to five thousand dollar cost, and that's something we talked about a couple meetings ago, where the Alderman were, you know, you all were on board with it. Again, we're just here to be sure that that's something that we want to be on board with and go forward with.
And would maintenance going forward be a city expense, or is that...
It would be a park expense.
A park, okay. And then we looked into like liability, extra insurance, all that stuff?
Yeah, the insurance cost is gonna go up by less than forty dollars, wasn't it? Well, Joe, you recall, the number was like fifty dollars. Yeah, it was like fifty bucks a month, is what it's gonna cost.
Two hundred and fifty dollars for the train, and like maybe two fifty for the entire water.
So, it was, it was right at forty dollars a month then.
And what year did they take this pool out?
Take what?
What year did they take the pool out?
The pool was taken out somewhere in two thousand thirteen, probably, there, twelve?
I thought it was like around seven three.
Was it that far back? Okay.
Wow. Just to make note, the public was promised to have water park if they took the pool out, and they never got it.
Yep, and, you know, the fundraising for it is difficult, but there's been some funds raised, and the park board has, has funding for it, and again, we're still gonna work on more fundraising, and that is gonna be not necessarily to make the spray park bigger, but to go ahead and supplement some of that money, so the park board can have their funds stay where it's at. But the park board fund is for infrastructure, it's not made to set the bank account and grow, it's made to be put into our park, so we're, we're not doing it good by leaving it there, not using it, and this is something that the community, we did just a little quick poll on it, we've got like seventy-eight percent positive.
There's about four hundred, there's about four hundred votes, maybe one or more votes.
Right, yep.
Hey, Tony, I think it's a great opportunity for our city to show some growth, especially with the passing of the, you know, I know it's hard, but it's kind of two for one, but I do have a question about sanitizing. Will there be somebody that's gonna maintain that, like, make sure that it's sanitized, cleaned up, their blood, or, you know, kids might...
It would be...
They'll go to the bathroom on it.
It would be the same, the same type of deal that we have right now with a shelter house. If something like that happened to a shelter house, we get a phone call, Joe has public words, go up and take care of that cleaning it up. I mean, it's no different than any other feature that we already have in the park.
And when you go to winterize it, I think valves was talked about to make the winterization easier, I don't know, you gotta, winterizing is a giant thing, but you got that many nozzles, what's your plan on winterizing to kind of keep the...
The, the as well will be as simple as possible, because I want it to where you can go up and winterize the whole place within an hour or so. You know, the, the drains will not have S straps in them, they'll go down, they'll have flappers to keep things from coming, backflow preventers to keep it from coming back, gravity takes it downhill. As far as the freshwater side of it, where it's coming in, all that is gonna be gravity drain. We may have a few that we have to blow out, but I would like to see the biggest part of this gravity drain to where it's very easily maintained.
I'm assuming it'll be on a timer?
Yes, it'll be on a timer, and what do they call it, a magic wand, the, the...
You wave your hand over?
It's, we've got pedestals, they, I think you call it a magic wand, but you go up, you wave your hand over it, that turns it on, we can set the timer to come on for one minute or thirty minutes, whatever one wants.
Or the foot, they can put their foot on the little thing on the ground, and they're all set up.
It's not being used as the water plant.
Right, and, and my, my theory on it is, if we have it set to where it's only gonna run three to seven minutes, you know, we'll wanna monitor it to see, but if, if it's only going three to seven minutes, it's another little game for the kids to run over, it's your turn to go over and turn it back on, you know, wave your hand and...
That's a cool feature.
It is, it's really neat.
They're called touch and go, which are the little balls, and then you have launchpads, which are the ones they step on.
Yeah, and it's not gonna be, yeah, it will, it'll save a lot of water, it's not gonna be to where you wave your hand on, and they all come on. There's gonna be two or three of those stations that make different areas come on, and then like the water cannons, you have to physically push the button on those to make those come on, it's, so there is interaction with it.
Will you be able to shut it down, like at nighttime?
Yeah, yeah, it'll all be on a timer to where it's, yep. Yep, that's all done through a control board, and that's, between that and the concrete, that's the two biggest expenses right there, is that control board.
What kind of, and I know we discussed this at the park board, but just what kind of time break are we looking at as far as, from start to finish, what, what's your thought on that?
I am, if we can make everything happen here, if we can move forward on the twentieth, having things happen, have all of our bids in, we've gotta get the different bids for the different projects of it. I would love to see this started by sometime May, mid-May, and be a ninety day project, basically, it could be going this summer. The, the huge goal would be to have it by the fourth of July, but that's probably gonna be a little tough, you know, that's, that's gonna be pushing, but if it, if we can, it will.
Do you know the size of what line it's gonna take?
We can, with the two inch that's already up there, that is gonna be, I was, I needed to get with you on the gallon per minute on that, but that two inch, he said that if we're running a two inch line, we're keeping it at seventy PSI, no problem, it'll take care of the gallon per minute that we need. But we need to talk about that also, and we need to locate and see exactly where it's at for sure. And not that that's a huge cost to run water wherever we run it to, you know, but, but I would like to have that information by the members, so we can know what we're up against there, because I'll have, I'll have plenty of contractors.
I don't know if it'd be the system, dryways you first pull in, or collectors, I guess, with the beater, sort of beats the top back even, that would probably...
Yep, yep. That's, that would be a good thing. So, I would, would love to have your all's blessing on it, so we can move forward with it. I move to approve that we let...
One more thing, just...
Okay.
Since that pool's been gone for a good, better part of fifteen years, and you've got good people purchasing, building against the fact that park would usually be nice and quiet, would you give any consideration to those people?
Yes, we have, and that's one thing that we talked about. The south of the pool house is our least likely place that we would like to put it. We would like to have it over by the shelter house, by Field Three, or down the hill just a little bit to the west of the pool house. And one reason is because there's yards there, and we don't want to back it up to residential yards that aren't gonna make noise. Yep, but we need that input from everybody.
I don't call that noise, children laughing.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, okay. I'd like to move to approve that we allow them to proceed with the planning of the splash pad for Heiser-Burns Park.
Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir, thanks for your work on that.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, elected officials comment?
I got a couple things.
Fire away.
All right. Joe, the sign, the signs, look good, I like them, so hopefully we can just continue that on, you know, however, phase basis, they do look really good.
As soon as we get the assembly done in twenty-four, they should be in any time.
And do we, did we have an update on the, that pothole up here off of twenty-four and seventy, but it's horrible?
Yeah, I contacted Millard last night, he kept talking about it, I had to go on the website, of course, the pothole.
Okay.
I'll keep on it.
Okay, I said, we could...
I don't know if my business has got Millers sticking out.
Yeah, that's, that's a bad situation there, I don't know if there's anything we can do for that. The Sambers at the park, I know that was a big issue last year, is there anything we can do to rectify that situation?
I'm gonna meet with Joe tomorrow.
Okay, I just, I just seen it pop up on Facebook, I just wanted to make sure that I was taken care of. And also, one more thing, this is basically just for reference purposes, the park board was wanting to do a disc golf setup at one point, and there's just some confusion on how the bid process works, and if they are required to put it in a certain newspaper, or can they just, you know, where do they have to advertise a bid app, and for how long?
Off the top of my head, I think it has to be in city hall and in a newspaper that's in circulation around here.
Okay, so any, any newspaper that's in circulation around here and in city hall?
I don't think the city has an official city newspaper, right, so then, yeah, I believe it's just a newspaper that's in print circulation in city hall.
There's gonna be three days printed, three days, two days prior to the opening, at least.
Okay. It's gonna show up three times. Perfect. Okay.
Anyone?
Joe, I was wondering about Mr. Thomas on one twenty Cooper Street, do we follow up with the...
Yeah, we did, his meter is reading accurate. Wilson out there last, went to do two demo, it was real nice, and he tested, and it's reading accurate, he went to do it, unfortunately, my four kids, teenagers there, so he killed them, so next day I had to occasionally call, go, stand and tell them the same thing. He actually, he actually came in early this week to pay his whole entire bill, but...
So, it's, so the three hundred, is that...
Yeah, he paid his all, he paid it all.
Okay, cool. Honorable, honorable. I'll just update, I did ask Joe, and we'll probably help try and get the actual stuff to you at the next meeting, get bids on seal coating Hudson out here from East Jefferson to the railroad tracks. It was about forty-six hundred dollars, but that was not to go curb to curb, that was a, I think, thirty-six foot wide, and so here, in this area, I think it's about forty-six feet, there's some additional costs for striping, so I just trying to find out if you, look, I mean, the pavement's in pretty good shape, but you're starting to get some pretty sizable cracks, and that was for a silicate type sealer that would just extend the life of this out here. Also asked to get some information on at least chip sealing Hudson south of the tracks up past Broyles, so that we can get some of that result as well. Currently, total cash on hand is six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, street fund has a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, water sewer right now a hundred and thirteen, parks a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and so, general fund is actually still a little over a hundred thousand, a hundred and seven thousand dollars, so, we're, you know, again, once you start spending it, it's gonna go down, but good news is, is that we're getting close to our rates here in April, so, you know, I, I wanna start making sure that as the weather gets better, that we're teed up, right, to do some of these public works projects, to make sure the folks know that we're, we're trying, I mean, again, I wish I had up to six hundred and two thousand dollars, but based on the city and all the things we need, that, that's not as much as it sounds like, but it's a good start to do some of these things. And I think as, if you guys, if you look around your ward, and you find streets that are in need, be getting back with me and Joe, and let us know, so we can start targeting and see how much we can, we can get fixed. I honestly thought about Park Street, especially if we're gonna be doing work down there to draw more people to the park, and make sure that we're getting that one cleaned up, although I noticed at Christmas it was getting a little wobbly, so, I think that that would be, in Ward One, that's the major one, I think, Ward Two, I don't know for sure what we've got, but I'm sure there's opportunities to look at that.
Yeah, there's a minority person.
If no one else has anything, I think I should do it your, oh, yes, sir.
I was gonna introduce you guys to Officer Kendall, he joined us not too long ago, about two months ago, he's off his training program, he's up there, good, thanks for the city, just gonna give you guys a face for the name of our new officer.
Well, who's our...
Thank you.
Unless you wanna sing, danger.
The only other thing I have for you is, we did finally get the buringo bag, I have to wait till next Wednesday to get graphics on, and then we'll be in service after that, so, we're almost there.
Cool, great. I'm gonna interrupt everybody again, after he's done, sorry. Sorry. I'd like to, I don't know if I can amend the minutes one more time for adding one more thing.
Is that a jibbit?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can I do that?
Is it five minutes or what?
Yes, it, it should be, I just, I'd like to just make a, a mini, a mini agenda to allow the park board to ask for the fourth of July fireworks.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
All in favor of mending the agenda to discuss fireworks?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Talk about it.
Oh, I know. Tony, you brought it up. I just found out a little bit. I apologize. I was unprepared, but...
It's just him.
We were, Raquel just got a phone call today and that's why she hadn't had a chance to talk to you about it. Uh, the fireworks company has done our fireworks forever. She did talk to them. There is an opening either on the third of July, which is the Saturday before July, or the week before. If the city wants to have fireworks in the park this year, it's something that we need to think about and get it scheduled. Typically, we would do fireworks in the park and we would have a band down there during the day and it would be a all afternoon event, you know, noon to, noon to nighttime.
What are the options to get, Tony?
I'm sorry?
The option of time?
The, it's, it could be, well, anytime. Right now they're open the Saturday, Saturday the third, July the third, or the Saturday before that. A lot of times in the past, we had it the week before.
We had.
Because they had a bigger event than ours for the Saturday of the fourth or the day of the fourth, you know? So we were kinda second rate, but right now that opening is there. So it is available if it's something that we wanna do this year. We missed it last year. It's typically, it's five thousand dollars for the fireworks. That's what we spent every year for many, many years. The guy looked back actually at the computer. That's just where it's been forever. They bought a bunch of fireworks years ago because they were afraid of the cost going up. So they're able to hold it to that price and give us a really big display like they have in the past. And that was five thousand for the fireworks. Then we would typically have a band and, and have it down there. So if we wanted to do something like that, it's gonna be here before we know it.
So we just need to know basically if there's gonna be the funds for that, for a band and fireworks. So at least I can get it down with the representative that they'll be able to come and do it.
I, I like the idea of fireworks. I always do. It's good. I know there's, there's gonna be some opposition for it, but, um, I like, it's, it's a good community time. The first time I ever stepped foot in Buckner was I was a vendor and that's fireworks display and everybody was very welcoming. It was a good time. I like fireworks, but, you know, that's my opinion.
I've always liked to have it a week prior because that gives everybody an opportunity to do, do something with family on the fourth. But that would, may not be a bad idea to try to do it on the fourth and the day of that one.
Or the third.
It'd be the third, which would be Saturday night, yeah.
Do we know any cancellation policies, money back, just in case COVID blows up more or something happens and we can't do it?
I know, but I'm gonna call them back and I can ask them.
Okay.
While you're calling people, the people that were here, uh, earlier, Snap, Rapple Boom, I believe, they had said to me last year that they would be interested in doing our fireworks as well. They didn't give a price or anything. But if you're calling around to get bids, that might try and contact them as well.
We can do that.
And they do commercial?
He said he, he said he had both, so.
They do it themselves?
That's why he was talking.
I guess you need to find out their, if their fire technicians, licensed fire technicians, I would assume, based upon insurance.
We'd probably have to qualify that for service. That's, that was the impression I got.
That's what you need to know.
Right now, they're not holding it for us until we give them a word, you know, they're not going to hold it.
Two weeks. I'm sure something will happen in two weeks and we probably have to think about it.
It's gonna need, uh... It needs some sparklers.
Yeah, bunches, bunches. And snaps.
All right.
We were talking about bands too. What, I mean, what's the projected cost? I mean, I know that's hard to probably say, but...
The, our, where'd she go?
Yeah, I noticed it was down.
How much was the band for the festival two years ago?
Well, previously it was a thousand dollars for previous bands. Um, maybe a possibility we can get one cheaper.
Isn't there some local, there's some local bands that, it's current gentleman in the audience plays a little? Well, Tony's got to get to ours, but we are, we got...
Last year we weren't in a financial position to even talk about it.
That's right. That was Oakland, it's kinda...
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with bringing it back.
I'd be okay if we can to put a seed in.
And I've, yeah.
Yeah.
And it really does draw a lot of people. I mean, there are over hundreds of people. It's a matter of time.
That's way, it's about as good as you'll find anywhere.
It's really good. Stadium or something like that.
I agree.
For the price that they do that, that display, it goes on forever and it's really good stuff.
I agree.
We're only been there forty-five minutes.
We have vendors there all day. They usually show up like at eleven and they stay all afternoon. And in the past, we've had, I mean, there's been what, ten, twelve vendors, easy.
I say Ben's been on there longer, so.
Yeah.
Usually if they show up, the vendors, we make them stay, you know, and they can't leave until...
Yeah, they're obligated. That'll wait, cause there is a slack time, like from, you know, two to four, four-thirty, whenever people start rolling back in. And that way they're kinda stuck there, committed to be there, which is a good thing. So they don't sneak off on us.
And would our police department be able to handle that?
If things hold tight the way we are, we should be fully staffed by then, so.
Count to use that positive.
Yeah.
And I'm a park board. We've always helped do parking.
Yep.
To utilize, you know, some of our people. We always, you know, pretty much do the parking. So that we keep, you know, our officers are not tied up doing parking.
We remain focused with that and we get everybody out afterwards. Hopefully with concrete deterioration at the intersection, hopefully those magnetic trucks keep somewhat in shape so we can utilize the traffic light without putting a house down there.
So is there, is there a motion to approve moving forward with the net to exceed of eight thousand dollars?
Totally. I don't think I would get into time to do the whole, or, you know, break it down into two different motions.
Is that what you desire?
I just grabbed it all from one.
What, what do you think we need to?
Park?
Do you, you think we need to motion?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't think we have to move. Corey didn't have everything as far as the time and the venue or whatever.
Yeah, so, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do that then. Uh, I move to allow up to eight thousand dollars and the time that has been outlined in the past events, uh, for the fireworks and the park this year on the third of July. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Yeah, thank you all. And that's, that's not, not just putting money out there. It really is a community deal. The, the community, I feel, really is needing right now.
I tell you why. Everybody, like to get one of the best things around.
You bet.
Sure.
All right. Hope no one has anything else. We will take a motion to adjourn.
Totally.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?